You did it.
I know.
I gotta cut.
And I asked that guy to resend it to us.
Okay, I gotta cut.
Hey, talk to her.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started. I'll turn it over to Mr. Manager, Alan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Manager, members of, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, members of City Council. The very first item that we have for presentation this afternoon is the FY 2024 General Fund Forecast and the First Quarter FY 2024 Financial Overview. So Lisa Cipriano is here, our Director of Budget and Evaluation, to review the materials with you.
Good afternoon, Council. Let me qualify this presentation by the first quarter of any fiscal year for the city is the most difficult to do any projections from as we do not start to collect our major tax groups of real estate, personal property, and machinery and tools until November. So our best projections are based on the general fund only. They come mainly looking at the trends from the prior fiscal year because at this particular point, the year is closed. So we're looking at matching the trends at the last three months of the previous fiscal year and where we're going so far. So at this particular point, with our major drivers still being collected at this point for the December 5th tax due date, we're estimating that all of these are on target. There's no reason to suspect that there's anything amiss, afoul, or any impacts whatsoever on our major groups of revenue here. These two taxes and where we're projecting to go on the consumer-sensitive taxes are really driven by where and if a recession starts. I was privileged to have three separate projections, one from the Federal Reserve, one from our pension consultant, Makita, and one other one. And every one of those projections two weeks ago showed a recession starting. Now, with any economic forecast, timing is everything. So all three had a slightly different start date, duration, and depth of a recession, but they feel that it's coming within the next six to eight to 12 months. This budget for the general fund was built for a recession. While we had very strong performing and unusually performing revenues in fiscal year 23, we lowered our projections for this fiscal year anticipating a recession to come either in this fiscal year or the second half. So all of these revenues right now for sales and meals, which are highly consumer-sensitive, are going to be projected for the first quarter to be coming in on schedule as planned. Right now, our sales tax we are collecting, we only have three months worth, July, August, and September, our average is $2.9 million, which is for each one of those months, which is $85,000 more than last year. When a recession happens, if a recession happens, how long it lasts could lower that number to a different average. So right now, at this particular point, we're just showing these consumer-sensitive ones being on target. Tax on deeds is based on the value of the mortgage and the deed entered into the clerk of courts system. With mortgages at 8%, yes, they're slower, but they're still being entered into our system. But right now, if this course keeps on at an 8% average to traditional mortgage rate, we're anticipating being a little low on this revenue in the coming months. Our business professional licenses will not be collected until March. They've been very strong in the past, and they're based on the grocery receipts for the prior calendar year. So we have no reason, again, to believe that there would be any shortfall there. Overall, we're projecting a $2.1 million shortfall in revenues. That comes from the grantor's tax, from the cigarette tax, believe it or not, is coming in lower than we have on average every month in the prior fiscal year, and from our human services revenue. There's a certain balance in reimbursement that comes with the use of services and how we're reimbursed. And right now, we're projecting to be about $1 million less in our reimbursement from human services, but that also means our services are not being consumed at the level that they have been in the past. So while not an unmanageable number at $2 million, it's less than 1%, and it's something that we will watch scrupulously over every single day over the next several months. On the expenditure side, we're projecting almost $6 million in savings due to vacancies. We continue to have hard-to-fill jobs. It's still very competitive. And at this particular point, we're seeing almost $6 million. In contractual services, we're projecting about $1 million over at this particular point. We've had several contracts that have come in higher, notably on security services for one. And so at this particular point, this is something we can manage, but if the course of action continues the way it is, we will be $1 million over. Materials and supplies, that's everything that we can control, from paving to pencils. And that is something where we can put in restrictions and slow down the expenditure rate should a recession happen, and we will be able to manage that within the dollars that we have. And all of our expenditures, which includes our grants, our payments to schools, and our debt service, we're projecting about $238,000 in savings. So overall, just shy of $5 million in savings. When you combine the revenue shortfall with the expenditure savings, we have a very nominal savings of about $3 million. Again, this is without putting any restrictions into place and watching how we're spending our money and how our revenues come in every single day. So timing is everything for a recession, if it actually happens during this fiscal year. So again, something we will be continuously watching. The Federal Reserve, if you remember last week, did not move on the interest rates, which suggests that the Federal Reserve is still trying to get down to its target inflation rate of 2%. And right now, for the month of October, it was 3.2%. So there's a little way to go there. We will continue to collect revenues all the way through the end of January that are due on December the 5th. So we have a while to watch how the revenues come in and how they're acting. And of course, we will always, always, always watch our expenditures. We live within the money that we generate, and we do not go over it. So at this particular time, we're not recommending any extraordinary actions, and that we will continue to move forward. Any questions?
Do we have any questions from City Council? None. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Our next item for discussion this afternoon is a presentation about the Brooks Crossing Innovation and Opportunity Center. And I hope that you'll take away from this presentation the hard work that has gone into play, particularly in recent months, not only from our staff, but also our partners who collaborate with city staff so well. So joining us this afternoon, we have Larry Brunson, who's Executive Director of Brooks Crossing Innovation and Opportunity Center, as well as Karen Senso, who's the Director of the Brooks Crossing Innovation Lab. And I can't thank Karen really enough for her injection of enthusiasm on behalf of Old Dominion University. She's really made a significant impact on the iLab side, and together, I think we have a very good team to move and position Brooks Crossing well in the community and as we look to the future. So we've asked Larry and Karen to share with you some of their important work that they have both been working hard to accomplish. And we also have a special treat for you. We have a very short video presentation that Newport News Television has put together to highlight some of the activities at Brooks Crossing as well. So thank you. Did you have a story?
In 2019, the city of Newport News, Huntington Ingalls, ODU, had this idea of having an Innovation and Opportunity Center, a learning center, not a community center, but a learning opportunity center where citizens can come and learn about what's happening now and what the future needs may be in the future to bring us to the present day. At that time, we were the only center with that type of strategy. Think about it, a municipal, an employer, and then a higher education. That had never been done before successfully.
So we're an instructional hub for STEM learning, which is science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. We add an extra M, so STEM emphasized, to infuse maritime. So we have a variety of program offerings through the iLab. We have students coming in from STEM classrooms. We have students coming from entrepreneurship classrooms, and we are supporting them in, again, around STEM learning.
I think one of the big things is we try to make our activities as engaging as possible. We want kids, teens, families coming in and learning, and we want to do that by getting their hands into whatever it is we're learning. We have things like a laser engraver. We have a UV printer, 3D printing. We also have some CNC machines. We've got vinyl cutting. And of course, it's all changing, expanding as we move forward.
Navigating Wealth is a six-week job readiness program for Newport News residents. We service all of Newport News residents that carry any barriers. We're not afraid of any barriers. We're here to help, and we're here to support and to help you get into the career of your field and your choice.
They pretty much helped me get enrolled in school. They helped me prepare for my classes. They trained me on just basic interaction in the workplace. There was different people for different tasks. There was someone who would help with childcare for my son. There was someone else who would actually help with concerns that I had at home. And the staff here is like family. Everybody was there to help. It wasn't just instruction. They helped me map out a course of action to execute those plans. And because of that, I now have a position at classic Mercedes-Benz of Hampton as a Service Advisor.
Brooks Crossing, they help us bridge the gap on areas that we can't operate in and vice versa. So it's a unique situation, but it's great. What we do is we help veterans, transitioning service members, those that are getting out of the military, and eligible spouses. You know, we help them overcome barriers that they do have, example of homelessness, resume issues, disabled veteran, things of those nature. It's very inspirational. It's what we all should be doing, trying to help those that are unfortunate, to help them get to a better place in life.
Much like a marriage, that when you meet someone and you think, this is my person, this is the one, Brooks Crossing is that partner.
It had a great impact on me. I loved the volunteer opportunity that I was able to have. I was able to interact with the families from the communities, the parents, the children. I was able to learn. The employees here taught me how to work some of the systems, to be able to help others, help the families that came. My message would be to get to Brooks Crossing Innovation Center. It's a great opportunity. Just come, try it out. You're gonna love it. I love it. Ever since we've gone, Ashton has been asking to come back.
Brooks Crossing is amazing!
Yes, Brooks Crossing is amazing. The city of Newport News is amazing. The citizens of Newport News are amazing. So I'm here just to offer you some more information that what Brooks Crossing is all about. I'm so pleased to be a part of this process. I'm so happy to be a part of the city of Newport News. It means a lot. So I just want to give you a quick overview. I think sometimes people are confused about what is Brooks Crossing. Let me just put it to you very simply and plain. Brooks Crossing Innovation Opportunity Center is a workforce development center. The city of Newport News has its own workforce development center. We are one in a handful of cities across America that can say that. We should applaud ourselves for that. Thank you very much for all the hard work that has gone into this process before I even got here. Our philosophy is very simple. We simply just want to have access or make access to our citizens' information, training, education, referrals, housing, transportation, and any other service they may need. It's just simple. We want to take all of our services and place them in one place, and that's what we've done. What are we doing? We're solving the core problem. We know what it is. We have underemployed citizens. We have unskilled job seekers. We have local industry needs here. And so the services that Brooks Crossing provides answers the questions. We provide career coaching and education and job placement, industry training, STEM-related resources and activities. And of course, we have a lot of hiring events. What's our vision? I'm going to read this to you because it's very important. "We strive to be the leading career center for delivering comprehensive, innovative, inclusive career and employment services in Newport News and beyond." Our core services tie into our mission. We walk with people daily, career coaching them from A to B. We provide skill assessments, career development and training, professional development for, like our teachers in the city of Newport News. The housing authorities have training there. Students have had training there and professional development. And I want to talk just a little bit about the skill assessment. Since I've been there, we are now an ACT-recognized work key psych. What does that mean? That means that we're able to proctor the work keys assessment, just like Huntington Ingalls. And with Huntington Ingalls, if you have little or no experience, you have to pass this assessment in order to be employed. So we provide that to our residents if they need it. We also have the second call when someone has to be retested for Huntington Ingalls, and not only Huntington Ingalls, other companies as well. And that same skill assessment is also can be presented to high school students as well. Our partners. We know that in 2019, we started out with three vested partners, the city, Huntington Ingalls, and ODU. And since that time, and since the time I've been here since about a year or so, we have grown with many partners. That's part of the vision. We can't do it by ourselves, but we certainly can do it with these partners. And I want to say that we work very well with Hampton Roads Workforce Council, and today I am smiling because our workforce development coach arrived today, and she is going to be helping us deliver these services to our citizens. I also want to talk about our partner, Virginia Peninsula Community College, and What's Next. What's Next is our very own recruitment machine. Not only do they recruit for the city of Newport News and Brooks Crossing, but they recruit all over wherever they can because they want to get the message out. Our people need the information. And what a great collaboration we have, not just with What's Next. And I will tell you that the very last collaboration happened in 40 days. Forty days was an idea, and at the end of that collaboration, What's Next and their lead, the community college, Brooks Crossing, was able to serve over 700 students in a workforce environment. I'm excited, so I'm stumbling, but it was so beautiful to see. In addition to that, we also served over 400 job seekers that day, and 67 jobs were placed that day. Just a few operational highlights. Our navigating for wealth program, very successful. We've had 20 cohorts completed since 2019. Over 400 people were served. Last year alone, 108 program completers, and 133 received credentials, which means that out of 108, some received more than one. We had a job placement rate of 81%. That's above what some industry standards are. And then, right now, we've had two cohorts since the summer. Our last one before the new year comes in ends this month, and our very own councilwoman, Tina Vick, will be the speaker that day. We had some very successful hiring events. Year-to-date, since quarter one, we have offered 192 job offers right onsite at Brooks Crossing. We have five more planned throughout 2024, and as you can see, some of our employers. Now, I want to say that we work very well with our Human Resource Department. They too are our partners. They come, and they also have hiring events at Brooks Crossing. And then, I'm very excited to talk about how we hosted the third annual, annual STEM event. What an event that was. Over 722 people attended. We had over, about 43 providers that had STEM activities. That's an increase of 52% from last year alone. And since its exception in 2021, 260%. And we should applaud that alone. Just applaud that alone. The community was enriched, and so was the people that attended. With all the great things happening in the city of Newport News and at Brooks Crossing, we have now been noted at the state level that we have a workforce development center that has great collaborations among their city partners, among their employer partners, among our third-party sector organizations. So we had the pleasure of the visit from Karen Merrick, our Secretary of Commerce and Trade. And she absorbed the information that we were able to give her as she toured our facility. Not only that, but the city of Newport News, along with Brooks Crossing, is now noted nationally. The U.S. Secretary of Labor, Julie Su, wanted to know what were we doing that made a difference? And how can DOL, Department of Labor, spend money in a different way that can benefit our citizens, and not just Newport News, but all over the nation? They looked at us as a model because we had the model that was perfect, in the sense that we had third, second organizations, we had employers, we had small organizations involved, we had great organizations involved, we had academics involved, students involved. And so this is a role model. You have to think of yourself. We must think of ourselves as a role model. We are role modeling what the Department of Labor is looking for in terms of workforce Our growth strategies. I want to talk about the main growth strategy that I'm embarking upon in 2024, and that is being out with the faith-based organizations, starting out with the southeast community first. We're talking about large faith base, small faith base, anyone that is in the market in terms of serving people we want to be connected to. So we have a plan for that. We'll start with the southeast community, then work our way up north through Newport News. I'm very excited to tell you that we also have, because we're not spending all of our money, but we are collaborating with VPCC, who has a grant to address the needs in the community in terms of faith-based organizations and workforce development. We have planned visits already to go out to these places and listen and learn. We'll listen to what the congregations have to say, and then we'll teach them what we Also want to talk about and share with you some of our up-and-coming programs and expansions. AARP, Senior Employment Services, will begin December 2023, this year. And what is that all about? We will have people that live in the city of Newport News that are senior citizens working at Brooks Crossing under the guidance of AARP, and that's another collaborative effort, because we don't pay them, AARP does. In addition to that, AARP will also provide services to seniors that will help them get upskilled, health, education, and welfare, more learning in terms of those efforts. And secondly, we're expanding our Hampton University OSHA Life Learning Program in January 2024. We spoke about it last year. We were ready to do it. Hampton University is ready to do it. We're going to bring culture, learning, experiences, group experiences to the citizenry of Newport News. And then there'll be some activities at Brooks Crossing, and Hampton University has promised that they will bus our residents to their campus for other activities. And lastly, on this evolving wheel, we have now have our virtual welding workshops starting in January. So we have, you know, we're in a digital age, and we want to make sure that theory works, that someone can go on a digital machine, learn, be introduced to. I've talked to employers that are interested in our workshops to start out, and if it works, we'll grow it. Right now, it'll be a class of four for about four weeks, about 30 hours, and we'll continue to do that until we can find a way that it really works and get more equipment. I just want to say that not many of you know that I used to live on 33rd Street, so... So I know what people go through. And I can tell you that the hands that we have worked with, we work with them diligently. We don't abuse funds. We don't waste time. And we're hoping to grow Brooks Crossing and scale it. And I hope that you see that the resources that we have are valuable. I'm open for questions.
We'll do it with Councilman Long.
Yeah. I saw Four Oaks is one of the partners. Do we have any statistics on how many patrons of Four Oaks have actually been able to get workforce training and job placement? Or is that...
So I don't have the numbers on that because I don't control that part, but I will tell you that we have collabed with Four Oaks. We are joined at the hips, and when we have events, hiring events, they do come, they bus the residents or the participants there. We talk with them. We've helped them individually to gain resumes, and so the communication is there. That's a tough market in terms of, it takes, there's a lot of barriers, so it takes more time because we need coaches that will walk with people and understand their needs.
Is the time still 5:00 p.m. for closing at Brooks Crossing?
So our normal operation times are 8 to 5:00, but we have a lot of evening events, and not just events, but also learning events. Right now, we're about to graduate our entrepreneurial class. That's from 6 to 8, and eight Newport News residents have graduated with the program and they'll be viable in terms of the business community.
I know that's beyond you, but Mr. City Manager, I still want to see Brooks Crossing go to at least 8:00 p.m. on a daily basis because of all the services that they're offering. A lot of people work in the daytime, and even when we do at What's Next, they're getting off of work, trying to make it to our work session at 5:00. So if we're closing at 5:00, we're missing a whole population of people who could benefit from these services. But being that we're closing at 5:00, they're not benefiting from these services, even our kids. They should be at the ODU Center till 8:00 at night, learning. It should be a transition. You come home from school. After you leave school, you could go to Brooks Crossing till 8:00 p.m. to take advantage of all these opportunities. Closing at 5:00 is really not doing kids any justice to learning those activities because if they stand after school, by the time they get home, it's closed. So we could really look at giving Mr. Brunson more additional help because he can't do it. I think you only have three staff over there, and with all that they're doing, they need more of a full operational staff to really meet the needs of the community. Because what I don't want to see is the staff, the two staff members you have, trying to stay from in the morning to 8:00 at night to make these needs happen. But thank you for that presentation. There's a lot of great things going on at Brooks Crossing.
Alan was going to say something. Alan? No, no, I don't want to belabor because I know we have a lot of other important matters to cover, but I just wanted to respond to Councilman Neely to say we are working hand- But I just wanted to respond to Councilman Neely to say we are working hand-in-hand with Larry and his staff. We recognize that there are opportunities for us to make some major inroads in evening and weekend hours.
Yes.
And we'll continue to provide him with access to part-time staff so he can make those programming adjustments. We've had some preliminary conversations and as you can tell from the evolving nature of this work, it is expanding, it is growing. We're very fortunate in that regard. We're not limited by having to just make those decisions at budget time alone. So you have my commitment to continue to support that endeavor.
Because great things are happening. So thank you so much.
I think next up was Councilman Vick.
Oh, yes. I did want to say a great presentation, Mr. Brunson. But my first question is the expansion of the Hampton University OSHA Life Learning. What is, what is expected to come out of that? Is there some certification? Or is it, is it like a six-week program?
It's a couple of things. So for instance, there will be some training opportunities to maybe someone who wants to upskill in a different area in their life, for example. They will also do things like learn foreign language. They will travel. So it's more of grouping that group together, whether you're educated or not, into one place where your life learning experience can be enhanced. And that could mean some other type of training because, because Hampton University has a, a list of programs. And some they will have at Brooks Crossing and some will be at the campus itself.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilman Harris.
I did have a quick question. You mentioned that you provide the Work Keys assessment. Now, do you also provide those for high school students that are in need of a writing or reading SOL and they're having trouble passing that assessment and can use the Work Keys as a compatible test?
Absolutely. So we have all of that in place. In fact, we are giving two tests next week, not to students, but to some job seekers that call for their employment needs. So yes, I'm very interested in expanding that to high schoolers. There is a great program with ACT, Beyond Work Keys. And hopefully, we'll have some conversations with our school leaders to, to include that in their programs.
Okay. I'll get some more information.
If there's no other further questions, I'd like to introduce Karen Sanzo, my other partner over at the lab. Thank you, Karen.
Hi, good evening. I'm Karen Sanzo and I'm a professor of educational leadership and the director of the Innovation Lab for ODU. It's really a pleasure to be here tonight to talk to you about the great things that are happening on the innovation side. And as you noticed with Larry, it's definitely a partnership and a collaboration that we're involved in. So the iLab is a hub, and it's a learning hub, where students, as well as people of all ages, can come and to be engaged in STEM learning. So science, technology, engineering, math, and that extra M with maritime, and to help spark creativity and innovation. And it's a very hands-on experiential learning approach where we're centering around real-world problems and helping, again, again, get students and other individuals really engaged in the work that we have going on. It's been a very busy year. So this summer, we offered a number of summer camps. All of these are free and open to the community. We had over 400 youth that came and participated. We also partnered with Newport News Public Schools and other area divisions, but primarily Newport News, to bring their STEM teachers. And all of their STEM teachers were trained and went through professional development. We co-designed and we also have worked on getting additional resources at the iLab to help support teachers in the school system. We also had 150 attendees at five evening events. And the point about the evening and the weekend needs are, you know, well-made. And those are areas that we're focusing on. We're continuing to add in more evening and weekend opportunities. I'll talk about that when I get to the 2024 slide. I also lead our design thinking efforts at Old Dominion University. And we've been bringing in more design thinking workshops and offering that to the community as well. And again, partnering with the opportunity side, with the navigating wealth with that. And then we have a number of partners that we've been working with this summer. We were able to bring in Huntington Ingalls Newport News ship employees to help do cybersecurity camps and volunteer at some of our workshops. Virginia Peninsula Community College and again, other partners throughout the area. This fall's been extremely busy. So not only have we had 17 field trips so far, between now and the end of the year, we'll have nine more field trips going on. In addition, we've been able to have community members come in for one-to-one trainings and one-to-one workshops with all of the different equipment we have. So I hope you all will come and do that as well. It's really fun there. We do have Open Maker Space Series going on, so we have it for teens. And this is in the afternoon and evening. And we'll have it for youth. We have it just for the adults because sometimes when the kids come in, they're able to do this quickly. And so the adults want their own time there. And then we have Family Maker Space Series. I hope you'll put it on your agenda December 14th from 6:00 to 8:00. We have our Family Maker Space. It's our, I think it's called Winter Fest, or Winter Wonders. Please come out for that. And then December 21st from 5:00 to 7:00, we're partnering specifically with the CNI community to have a Family Maker Space for the, for the members of the community. And we'll continue to do that going into next year. We also have other after-school summer camps. I mean, sorry, it's not summer. After-school activities with cybersecurity. We've been partnering with our interns from the School of Cybersecurity at ODU. We have about 10 of them that are coming out and sharing their expertise with students. So our K-12 students can see maybe some kids closer to their age instead of the adults that are there helping them get involved in STEM activities. We have a lot going on in 2024. So we are going to have the ribbon-cutting ceremony for our GoTech Lab, which is the great opportunities in technology and emerging careers. We have one GoTech Lab right now in a middle school at Ella Fitzgerald and we're hoping to bring more online. While this is a middle school-oriented classroom, it's really open to kids and adults of all ages. Again, it's a chance for us to partner with the opportunity side. It is really getting kids interested in careers from an early age. We have, and I have a list on here, we have virtual welding, we have cybersecurity, healthcare, robotics, hydroponics, and lots of other types of equipment. We're going to be able to take that and offer workshops and camps, again, for kids, for adults to have multi-generational events. So again, they're coming in, the kids are seeing themselves being able to engage in this work. We're working with the opportunity side and really partnering and collaborating in that space. Everybody likes the virtual welding. It's really fun. And then we also, whoops, I just, and then we have our Spring Maker Space Series. Oh, I want to go back to the GoTech. This is funded through a couple of different grants. So we're really actively seeking ways that we can bring additional funding into the space. And so the GoTech is from a GoVirginia grant where we're partnering with the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research, as well as the Hampton Roads Workforce Council has helped us bring in the grant funding, and additional funding from the submarine industrial base. And these GoTech Labs are in school divisions all across the region, but they're coming here to Newport News to see that we are the hub for this learning and innovation. And then Verizon is sponsoring our Spring 2024 Maker Space Series. I think we have given handouts with those dates. If not, we will get those for you. So we hope that you will come again and participate. And then we are continuing to partner with Newport News Public Schools, field trips. Newport News Public Schools have had the STEM nights this fall. Some of them, not all of them, have STEM nights at the iLab. And we're continuing to do that into the spring. The point about the, about the evening and the weekend events, we are actively seeking out funding. We're hoping that we're going to have a pretty large grant that's going to pay for the later evening and the weekend programming events. That's very important to us. And then we're also making sure that we're reaching out and partnering with the community. We've gone out to our faith-based colleagues around the area on their weekend events to really bring people more into the iLab, but also learn from the community what it is that you all want to see happen in that space. I'm a professor. I can talk all day, so I'm happy to keep on doing that. But I just appreciate being able to support the work that's taking place. So thank you. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any questions? Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You know, Brooks Crossing is one of those city-initiated efforts. It's not just successful, however, because of the city and the city staff. But it is transformative and transformative in so many ways when we know that we really have to lift the bar for the next generation of people here in the city of Newport News. So we can do that at Brooks Crossing. We can do it in an impactful way. We can do it through education. We can do it through training. And we really can see the long-term results in, in helping our residents see a better future. And I just can't emphasize how important this work is and why we need to continue to evolve what we've started. So thank you so much. Our next presentation is the Greater Hilton Area Plan. I know there's been a lot of discussion as this plan was coming into maturity. This afternoon, we have Sheila McAllister, Director of Planning, who's going to provide an overview of the plan for you and entertain any questions that you may have.
All right. Now I'll get started. But before I get started, I do like to say that much of the community engagement that was done on the plan was done by a planner that's no longer here. And I just kind of wanted to give her credit for that. And also Carolyn Passat, who took the lead after she left. And the planner that left us was Tolu. And Carolyn took the lead after she left and moved the, the plan forward. And she's out sick today, so you have me. The plan area is about 2.8 square miles. It is an extension of the 1998 plan, which did not go as far as J. Clyde Morris Boulevard. We included, we had extended the plan this time because we wanted to capture the areas going into the Historic Hilton and exiting out of Historic Hilton. So the boundaries now are J. Clyde Morris Boulevard, the James River Government Ditch, to the CSX Railroad. The process, we have six processes. Phase one, we started in 2020 where we actually initiated the plan and started gathering the Technical Advisory Committee and the Citizen Advisory Committee, members to serve on both. The Technical Advisory Committee is internal. It's basically departments that would be part of implementation of the plan. Phase two is developing the existing conditions. And phase three was creating the vision and goals based on that community engagement and then completing a draft. And we are now in the final plan phase, moving to plan adoption. Community engagement consisted of a Citizen Advisory Committee made up of seven members from the community, Technical Advisory Committee. Community meetings we had, we had that during the height of COVID. Public engagement survey was done. Also, we had several focus group meetings. And when we couldn't get enough people in the focus group meetings, we did stakeholder interviews. And that took place over a period of two years, from '21 to '22. The existing land use in this plan area is predominantly, wanted to show you this because it's predominantly park and open space, which is different than most neighborhoods or areas in Newport News. The predominant land use is park and open space and the next largest is residential. Very small percentage of commercial, even though it appears as though there's quite a bit of commercial because you see it along Wark Boulevard. And this is the vision that came out of all of the community engagement. As you can see, that the community values historical, cultural, and natural features. And the plan is developed based on neighborhood sectors, Sector One. And in the plan, we identify issues and opportunities in each one of those sectors. Sector One includes Mariners Museum Park, along with Gatewood Neighborhood. Sector Two is your Camp Morrison and Dutch Village. Sector Three is your Historic Hilton, Rivermont, and North Hilton, and Brandon Heights. And Sector Four would include work on the James, Cedar Grove, and other neighborhoods within that area. The planning themes that came out of the community engagement, which also guide the goals and strategies in the plan, is character preservation enhancement, economic empowerment, safe environment accessibility, and community connections. The plan goals are designed to move the community forward by looking at the character and extending that character as you enter Rivermont and exit past the historic district. Economic empowerment is to reuse existing vacant buildings, do redevelopment revitalization along the corridor, and also creating arts district within this area. These are some examples. This is the UPS Call Center. What could happen, reduce some of the parking that's out front, create outdoor plazas that bring the building closer to the street. At least it gives the appearance of bringing the building closer to the street. And this is an example of what could happen at the firehouse, taking down the garage that is not historic to the building, keeping the historic building, doing some type of business in there, creating a coffee house, restaurant, that also supports that outdoor seating area that could also support the library. And safe and environment and accessibility is looking at the possibility of creating bike lanes, especially along Wark Boulevard as you go north past Hilton, where you have three lanes going out, out of Historic Hilton Village. I know that, you know, that may seem something that may be extreme, but it's something that we feel like we should at least evaluate to create areas where you could have safe other modes of transportation. And community connections, looking at spaces, improving the Municipal Lane Park, looking at spaces behind the Police Museum. That's just open space right now that could be used as a parklet. And also encouraging people to use the meeting spaces that are there that were designed to be used by the community. And this is a private, this is Museum Parkway, a boardwalk that's proposed along there. It's a private investment. I understand that it is moving forward. And the future land use map recommendations, we're not changing the map per se, but there are certain areas in order to implement the goals and strategies in the plan that we felt needed to be changed. Any questions?
A question. I know, and this has been many, many years ago, there was plans about creating more parking spaces in the Hilton area. Is that a part of the plan or is that something we've moved away from?
No, that's been discussed, not necessarily in Historic Hilton, but as in, well, I call it Historic Rivermont, along Rivermont.
Yeah.
Where we already own property to add more parking spaces. And also, we looked at, looking at some type of streetscape along that portion of Wark Boulevard also.
Talk about the Ella Hess, the Ella Hess gas station site that we bought years ago.
Yes.
And the concept drawing of Museum Parkway Boardwalk, you said, you should have said that that was already underway?
The museum is doing that and it's by understanding that they have selected a contractor.
Do we have any further questions?
Yeah, just something quick. I'm trying to remember and I'm piecing it together vaguely. The state deemed Hilton to be something, I can't remember. I know Megan Adams and JB, they were trying to get us to go to something a while back, I think. I don't recall, but I'm trying to remember.
The Main Street Program. The Main Street Program.
Okay, I got you. All right, never mind. Thank you, Sheila.
Do we have any other questions? Thank you.
Our next presentation this afternoon is a Virginia Enterprise Zone program update. And so Mallory Butler, our Economic Development Manager, will present the presentation to you today.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, members of council, City Manager Archer. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening and share an overview of the Enterprise Zone program. I have served as an Enterprise Zone Administrator for 14, little over half of my career, for different communities. And I'm very pleased to be in the process of training Newport News's next Enterprise Zone Administrator, my colleague Katrina Turner. If you would stand up. Katrina has been with us about 100 days. So she is still learning the program. And so I am pitching in right now for her, but you'll see more of her in the future. So a little background on the Enterprise Zone program. It was established by the Virginia General Assembly in 1982. Newport News has been at the table since day one. We competed in the first round of Enterprise Zone designations and have had multiple zones from the very beginning. And we presently have two zones. The program is a partnership between the state and the locality. And it is geared to promote development and redevelopment in targeted areas. to promote development and redevelopment in targeted areas, those that have been economically distressed or are economically distressed. And when you combine it with other federal, state, and local programs, it can really leverage and take and spur private development and private investment. It is managed by our partners at the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. And, no surprise, since we've been at the table since day one, Newport News has one of the most well-established and well-regarded Enterprise Zone programs in the state. Currently, there are 45 zones in Virginia. That number is shrinking because the General Assembly in 2005 passed legislation to reduce that number to 30, which has made it even more competitive than it was previously. So our two zones are very important to us. So what are the requirements to receive and maintain one of these designations? Well, localities must submit a comprehensive, very detailed application, and it is highly competitive. That application must include a overall restructuring plan for the community and strategy, and it must include local incentives that spur job creation and capital investment. The designation is based on the locality-wide need, as well as the potential designation and impact, and there are size limitations. You cannot make an entire community an enterprise zone. The, there are minimum and maximum size requirements. The minimum is half a square mile, the maximum is six square miles. And the state requires that the localities actively promote and market the zones. They require that companies and investors take advantage of both the state and local incentives, and they require the locality to periodically update the local program to correspond with changes that the state makes along the way. So for example, at one time, residential properties were eligible for certain incentives and programs. The state changed that years ago, so we are in the process of refining our boundaries and removing those residential properties that cannot take advantage of the program. Additionally, if a locality that has a zone wants to add additional incentives, they certainly can over the time and the life of their zone. However, if they ever want to reduce or take out an incentive, they must replace it with another incentive of equal or greater value. The, the process is a transparent process. It involves a series of public hearings. It involves approval by city council with support by the Economic Development Authority. Those then, that information is then taken to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. They do a review, and they make a recommendation to the governor's office. The governor's team then makes the final designation, and then we come back and work with our partners with the city attorney's office to update code appropriately. So where are Newport News's enterprise zones? We have two zones, and you should have a map with you that is downloadable from our website that shows the two zones, Zone 3 and Zone 31, and you can see the different geographies there that are incorporated there. And while the majority of the city's industrial or commercial corridors and business parks are in the zone, we routinely refine those boundaries to be sure that we are following the comprehensive plan, the various area plans, like the Hilton Plan, as well as the city's strategic plan. So we are in the process of doing that, and we'll talk more in a minute about how we do that. Again, we will refine it to remove the residential that's, that's no longer eligible. Zone 3 was designated, the current Zone 3 was designated in 2004 and had a lifespan of 20 years, which expires at the end of this year. We've already submitted our renewal application and should be receiving letters in the next week or two, extending that zone for another five years. Zone, our current Zone 31 was designated in 2015, and it had a, has an original 10-year lifespan with three five-year renewals. You can see the state has changed this over time, and will submit that first renewal next year. So, on to what do these zones offer? They offer a mix of state and local incentives for job creation and investment in real property, you know, real estate, business, personal property, machinery and tools. And they are available to large and small businesses, everything from a international Fortune 500 publicly traded company to a small, independent, family-owned startup or entrepreneur. All, all the incentives, both at the state and the local level, are what we called economic development best practices. They are pay-for-performance incentives. That means a company or an investor does not receive them until after they have met the thresholds or the targets, they have paid for the work, and they have documented all of that with a series of reports and paperwork, and then they receive the benefit of the incentive. We have, in the state incentive, there are job creation grants and real property investment grants. Those details of the requirements and the benefits are outlined on yet another flyer you have with you that we download from our website. And just to give you an idea, I mentioned, you know, Newport News is very active, and we have a number of participants in the state program. We had three companies apply for job creation grants in 2022. They hired 254 individuals, and they received a state, total state grants of $204,000. On the real property investment side, we had four property owners invest $6.7 million and receive $325,000 in grants, and we have calculated and estimate that that will turn into nearly $80,000 in new annual real estate tax revenue. Then, at the local level, we have a series of incentives. For larger projects, we have what we call our Expansion Relocation Cost Reduction Incentive Grant, or ERCR. And that is a grant equal to 50% of the net new taxes that a company pays after they meet the, their required thresholds, and after the documentation and the reporting has been submitted. And the reason we structure that as 50% of the net new taxes in the first six years is we want the city to start receiving tax revenue the minute the company has made that investment. Some other communities might do 100% upfront for a period of years. We want to partner with that company and have the company receive a grant while we too are receiving tax revenue for those first six years. At the, for, for smaller projects, we have our partial refund of the business professional and occupational license fee, as well as a partial refund of the local taxes on gas and electric bills. And those programs run for 10 years. Those two have thresholds of minimum capital investment and minimum job creation. They're substantially lower than the thresholds for the ERCR. And then, an additional piece that we do, we have a series of citywide programs, the Facade Improvement Grant and the Commercial Rehabilitation Tax Abatement Program, or CRYPTA. And if properties or companies are in the enterprise zone, they may have a lower threshold or a greater benefit with those citywide programs. Now, we've got this, these great designations, and we have these wonderful incentives. How do we go about sharing, sharing that information? Well, we have a very robust website that we developed in 2021. Thanks to our partnership with GIS, it has an interactive map, so a business or a property owner can put in an address and see if they're in a zone, and if so, which zone. We do direct mail campaigns. We mine the data from the codes department on building permits and COs to see who's made an investment, and we track them down and encourage them to apply. We do similar work with information we buy from the Virginia Employment Commission that's highly confidential, but if we look at it, we can see who's growing and suggest they consider the job creation grant and some of these others. So we're very aggressive in that. We partner with DHCD to sponsor and host how to apply or how to qualify workshops. We have conversations and phone calls every day with existing businesses and prospective businesses about the zone program, and then we make sure our partners in the accounting community, and the banking community, and the commercial real estate community are aware of these programs. So, the next step, where do we go from here? As the city manager mentioned, we are going to do some updates, and we'll be back with you in 2024 to evaluate the boundaries that we currently have, to be sure they conform to the comp plan, to our new area plans. Staff is doing that evaluation now. We will then be with you all in 2024. Again, it's a very transparent, public process. We'll send that application up to DHCD. They'll make their recommendation to the governor, and he should approve it, hopefully. And then we'll be back with our colleagues in the attorney's office to update code. So, in summary, the Enterprise Zone program is a partnership between the state and the local government. It facilitates development and redevelopment in targeted areas, and it's a very effective way of stimulating job creation and investment. So, with that, thank you.
Do we have any questions at this time?
I do want to ask you, as we talked about that, and I saw that, AGC, DHC, does that, is that, while you're here, is that connected? Is that, would that create a connection for, since you've got the designation for Hilton, is it combined in any way, or is that separate?
It's the same state agency that administers the two programs. That area of Hilton is currently in the zone, and we're double-checking to make sure that as we modify these boundaries, that all of Hilton's commercial area is in the zone, and we haven't missed anything that's in the area plan.
That would be great. Okay, thank you so much for that.
Do we have any further questions? Thank you.
Our final item this afternoon for discussion is the draft of the City of Newport News City Council Handbook. And so I think we've done a good job with many people collaborating on our city staff, using model documents from other communities to make good on our commitment to present you with a document that this council and future councils can use as a guide for general understanding of, of your roles and responsibilities, as well as setting some parameters in terms of expectations that you may have on, on council, ranging from, again, your, your public-facing role, to ethics, to terminology that is frequently used in adopting the budget, to even guidelines around your constituent service representatives and routine expenditures. And so this information's been compiled. I think the draft is pretty, pretty close to completion, and in my conversations with the mayor, I think he, he wanted to use the work session this afternoon also as an opportunity to highlight a couple of areas that he's been focused on, and to have an exchange with council this afternoon.
Thank you, Alan. So, once again, just thank you to all the staff. I know I gave you guys a tight timeline. We wanted it to get it passed before the end of the year, and so for city council, I know we sent this out last week, the, the idea is, there's probably four or five just separate parts that we need to talk about here on the table. Staff will go back and update it, and then ideally, we only have one meeting in December, so we can pass that in December. We've gone back and forth, I think this is the fifth or the sixth version, Alan, that, that we've talked about. I think this is like the 98% solution, but I do want to talk about four or five items. So, the first, and don't, don't worry about finding it in the actual document, we can update it, okay? The first thing is going to be electronic meetings. So, Councilman Neely, I know for the school board, there's, if someone's not there, they have the option to like, to zoom in or to vote virtually. So we actually don't have anything on the books about that. I'm sort of neutral on it. I think if we do want to include some provision of, I'm sick, I can't make it, I'd probably recommend no more than two meetings in a year. We don't have to update it, but I, I need consensus, like, as a group, what do we want to do about electronic participation in city council? We, we don't have anything on the books right now.
There'd be work sessions and the regular meeting, or?
Uh, we haven't actually talked about it. I think.
It could be either.
Yeah.
And, under the state code.
Colley, your mic.
If we choose to do that, you have to have a quorum present in person, but the, but one or two members could participate electronically, and you could put a limit on that. That way, people don't take advantage of it. It's just, normally, the idea is to have people there in person.
Yeah. And, and, and I forgot to mention that, the idea for the handbook is that every time there's a reorganization, so every two years, that new council will have the ability to update, to modify, et cetera. And so, we don't, we don't have to act on it, we can change it, but I just think, how do we want to address electronic meetings?
Did we have anything that was in place when we had to go to the virtual meetings?
When we did that during the pandemic, there was a state code provision that allowed us to do that under an emergency basis because of the declared emergency that the governor declared under the pandemic. This is something different. This, this would be a normal operating situation. And we, my office is prepared to draft a resolution or the policy that council could adopt if you choose to do it.
So that was all under, that was all under emergency?
Yeah, exactly. So there's, there's no rule. I'm neutral on it. It just, if someone wants the ability, if they're sick, to be able to vote virtually.
I mean, I like the idea of voting at the regular meeting. I think work session would be kind of tough to have an interactive discussion with a person offline and other people in the room. I think satisfies the, you know, original requirement of city council to be able to vote at those regular meetings.
Well, now that both meetings are televised, council members, if they're sick, can still watch it, it's just they can't participate or vote.
That's right.
Well, when, when it was on the school board, occasionally, it didn't happen that often, someone would be.
Excused.
Excused, and be there for work session, but it wasn't, it maybe happened twice out of the year. So it wasn't a situation where it's happening every work session meeting. We just had the ability to do it if you were sick.
Okay. So, what if we include language that we can do it, and we can say one time a year? Is that appropriate, or do you want to do two times for the language? Because, because, so this, this thing is 99% done, so whatever we update, we'll update tomorrow and then be ready in two weeks.
Yeah, I would say too, because I think that's a, a thing about reality of life, that people do get sick, and, and maybe they're not sick enough that they, they may be too sick to come out, but they could still participate in a meeting, and particularly at the time that we're in where they do have, where we do have Zoom capability. So I, I would, would like to see at least two meetings in there allowed.
I was gonna say three, but.
I think two.
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay. So we're gonna update that to, to, and there's, there's no rush on this, Colley, like, we don't need the, the, to worry on this, but just include it in the language.
Can I ask a quick, because I know you mentioned the word being sick, but I do know it's times that council members are out at conferences and.
Oh, right, yeah.
Things of that nature, so it would be, you know, they could still attend a meeting even if they're at a conference.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
That was the, the first thing. The second thing is a note that I added, and I just wanted, I don't think there should be an issue, but just to make sure we're all aware. So every, I think it's due every February, everyone who's elected has to do that statement of economic interest. I've looked at other cities, it's pretty hit and miss, people fill it out different ways, different information. I would like for us all to do it at around the same time, and then Mabel and Colley's office approve it, and then, we're not, we're not gonna like, publish it, but that way, we're not just independently just doing it ourselves. It's gonna be a process, and it's gonna be through Mabel's office, and then verified by Colley. So, we just added that provision. It doesn't really change anything, it's just a sort of heads up, we'll do it every January, February.
Does this standardize all of our responses?
Not standardize the, but if you look at other cities, different people put different things for like, expenditure, it is, it's not, it's not codified, and so I would just like someone to take a look at it. It's hit and miss across the state. I'm just trying to just make sure that we're all on the same thing.
Okay.
Okay. So the, the third, fourth, and fifth might be a little bit more, have some discussion. So, I'll probably have you talk a little bit about the business mills, but I'll just, I'll give some. I'll give some, some, some guidance. So, what we're trying to do is avoid situation where it's like, you can do, you can pay for meal in this setting, but not this setting. It's just, it's getting just too confusing. And so, we don't need to get into like, the legal opinion of it, but we're taking a look and we're gonna change how we look at business meals in the business of the city. I think before, it's technically, it's like intergovernmental agency. It hasn't been updated in a while. So, the point is Alan and Colley are gonna come back, maybe not tonight, but they're gonna come back with what that means. It's gonna expand. So, I do a quarterly meeting with all the base commanders. Like, that, that is already included, but it's just sort of in a gray zone. So, to remove any gray zone ambiguity, et cetera, for local business meals, it hasn't been updated and we're working to update it for ours. So, I know we're pressed for time, but do you just want to comment briefly on that, Alan?
So, I'll, I'll allow Colley to also provide some additional commentary. I think at a very high level, what we're seeking with this handbook is to provide council with, with clarity. And so as we work through various versions of the draft, we want to make sure that we're using common language that's easily interpretable. And so right now, there are references to Virginia Code Section for good reason, for you to actually be able to refer to that specific code section and look it up for yourself. But I think we can add clarity to help you navigate your role in a public setting by giving examples. And we're not gonna be able to provide you an absolute example for every scenario that you cover. What we're really trying to avoid here is any proprietor, any impropriety as it relates to council failing to recognize when you may be in a position of paying for a meal and the actual definition of that, payment for the meal is interpreted as a gift. And so, you know, Colley and his staff are working hard to ensure that, you know, you, you're above and, and safe from, from making that, that mistake. It's legitimate business expenditure, it's to support a governmental purpose, but I think there's also some room to, to build out that definition so that other examples can be provided to make sure that it's clear.
So, this, this is a work in progress, but it's, it's gonna be the old, not the old ways, that's the wrong way to say it. It needs to be updated and increased to, to expand what intergovernmental means. That's what they're gonna do for us. Councilman Long?
Yeah. I know when I, in the beginning, what was told to me is only city employees could receive if you use your city card for business, only city employees. So, now you're saying that it'd be more, like if it's the president of the Virginia Peninsula Community College, we're talking about workforce development.
Yes.
Is that meaning that person would be expanded to be in part of city business?
Yeah, so exactly. So, what I'm trying to avoid is a situation in which some things are classified in the city as economic development. So, this is for the good of the city and so that's what people use it for. I've read this code multiple times. It's, it's too gray even for, even for me to really take a look at it. So, so that'd be a good example, like that's now, in this new parameters is going to be authorized once we get the legal opinion. But yes, where it gets legal is the gifts. It cannot be a gift, but in the business of the city, so we're going to spell out multiple things. So, I think that's a great example, Councilman Long, of the president, you're doing workforce development, it's the, it's VPCC, I think that's a perfect example. So, we're not restricting council, it's actually giving it more parameters and more guidance. So, this is still work in progress, but they're going to expand it for us.
That's the third thing.
I have seven minutes left. So, this is, next thing is gonna be, and Councilman Vic, I know you've been on council for a long time and you've seen it in multiple ways. So, these, this, this table budget, okay? I think the table budget is, talking to the, the city manager, we're going to bring it back, move it from the manager's office back into, under city council. I think what's happening right now is there'll be an event, okay? We purchase a table, boom. Then we try to fill it. I've been to a few events and there's been like, either it's the table's oversubscribed and we stand up, or there's one person at the table, okay? So, we need to do, I think as a city, a better job of like, if we invest into an expensive table, that we have the right people invited. Additionally, which, uh, which nonprofits are we, are we sponsoring? I don't really have visibility into it. I know before, there used to be something about each council member got their own table budget. I know there's, there's pros and cons.
It was, no, but good point, Mr. Mayor, but I think the best way since I've been on council, because what I can see as being on since 2008, I do know, and being here now, the invites to events have probably at least are three times as high as it was when I came on in '08. Not only because, I, I do know that because of the diversity of the council, because so many people now are emerging with different nonprofits, they're having galas, two and three galas a weekend, and they're expecting us to come, but these galas cost. And so, I think of that really way back in the day, there, there were a small amount and some of these organizations were, they, they were heavily endowed enough to gift a, a ticket to a, a mayor or vice mayor or, or council members. But now, you have the people now who, the reality is, they're wanting us to come somewhat like publicity to help them, because we're attracting people because they want to come and see the mayor, they want to come and see the vice mayor there at their event, or the council members. So, I think as we're talking about this, the thing that I think is so important is that the times have changed. The arena of politics has changed and I do really, I did really love the way that we had the $2,000 where each council member had that amount. That way, if you decided to go to an event, you would pay and, and, and I'm quite sure it was legal because we did it.
Well, the one thing you have to do is make sure that it's vetted.
Yeah, yeah, but hold on, let me finish this part because, and the thing about that was, that way it wasn't a lot of confusion. Everybody got to see their own budget as to what they could spend or what they did not want to spend, and they didn't have to purchase an entire table. You could just get one ticket if you wanted to go to the event. And I thought that was a good policy, but what were you saying, Colley?
That, that we can give money to nonprofits that are located in Newport News or provide services for Newport's new citizens. And some of the invitations council members get are from organizations that don't really qualify. So, it would need to be vetted before you get.
So, we couldn't go to Hampton? We couldn't go to a Hampton event?
Depends on whether the organization provides services, if it's a Hampton organization, whether they provide services for Newport News citizens. If they do, then we can donate money to them.
Is the goal for it to be in this handbook? Some kind of explanation, I would hope so.
Yes. So, what, the, the plan is right now, and this is, this one is still work in progress as well, but we're gonna move it from the manager's office. We're gonna move it probably some sort of between city council and the city clerk's office, where it's also before it's, it needs to be its own line item, right? It needs to be a line item in the budget, not a, we'll make it work, et cetera, right? I, I like line items because it's when it's gone, it's sort of gone. So, we'll have more visibility into it. I think, I think we've done actually a really good job this year. I know last year, there was a lot of random table requests at the last minute. I think we've actually cut that down tremendously. So, just to save more money, I'll have more visibility on it into next year. This is a work in progress. Alan will come back with some of the language around it, but the main point is it's gonna be, no more of, the manager's office will buy the table and we try to source it. It's gonna be like, nobody wants to go to that, so we're not gonna buy a ticket. Because, I mean, these, these tables have gotten more expensive. An average table, $6,000. I, we just can't keep doing that and have one person show up or have ten people show up. So, we'll just do a better job and I think it should be under city council. And I think Alan and I agree on that.
Last thing I just want to add, are we saying this is for throughout the city? Because you have different departments that could potentially purchase a table. So, if all of this is going to be encompassed within our handbook, then I think it should be pretty clear to everybody.
Yeah, I think, I think the only, I think the only gray area, and we'll, we'll work through this, we're actually compiling some background information to help develop the language with the help of the budget office and finance office. We're, we're gathering two years' worth of data to sort of get a better understanding of, of how the sponsorships have been secured. And those that you can anticipate, which are routine, you know you're gonna get every year, that typically the council would support versus those that you may decide, you know, are, are an outlier and maybe you just don't have the funding to support them this year. I think the main point for me is that those decisions that you make around qualified charitable gifts to those nonprofits, needs to be a decision that the council reaches, not a decision that comes from the city manager. We can make decisions around what might be considered routine, table sponsorships. An example might be the community services board, right? A state, yeah, state sponsored and supported, local government supported, agency that provides services to our citizens. Typical example is their Thanksgiving dinner. Many of us serve on that board, whether we're governmental employees or council members, and, and they serve a governmental function. I'm, I'm, I'm okay having some input on something like that, something like supporting our neighbors when they participate in the Chamber of Commerce's State of the City Address. It's, it's routine that council and perhaps key staff might support our neighbors. Those are things that I'm comfortable with, but I'm not comfortable with making recommendations around the council consensus of how you want to recognize other charitable contributions in the community. I think that's appropriate for, for that to, to stay in your wheelhouse with some parameters around how you want to, want to, want to divvy up your funds to support those organizations.
I, I like the idea about the table, bringing it under the city council, but does that also affect the single ticket items? Because, I mean, some, some events like Councilwoman Vic stated, I mean, we're invited to a lot of different functions and we're not all going to those functions at the same time. Maybe one or two council members may attend. So, that's.
So, ideally, what I would like to see for the next budget, and, and we're, we're gonna hit on travel is the last one, is you need to have, they need to be individual line items. I think before, there's been a history of like, we'll just sort of, you know, Peter to pay Paul, like, everyone has line items, we can have line items, so, for everything. So, I, I think there should be a line item for that as well, for single, single tickets, et cetera.
So, it may go back to Councilwoman Vic stated about having the budget for council members, so they can buy that single ticket item here and there.
I think that's.
And really just, we're just trying to codify it, because there's, there's just so much gray that it's like, well, if we're gonna just take a look under the hood, let's just do everything. The last thing is, is travel. So, I know everyone, or most people had the chance to go to NLC, but even when going through NLC, I know there was some difficulties. You get there, you're trying to follow the rules, you're like triple checking everything and your credit card doesn't work when you get to the hotel, right? Then it's a thing, then you call me and I call Alan and it's like a thing, right?
You're talking about me?
I'm, I'm talking about multiple, multiple, I got multiple phone calls last weekend. And so.
That's not gonna make the.
So, I, I think in order to make this, in order to make this more efficient and to outsource to a more, not neutral party, just someone that's experienced in this, Alan and I have been talking, and I think the best way to do this is a third-party travel agent that just does everything. So, that way you're not trying to like, credit card limit, personal, it's just, it's just getting to, it's just getting to the point of like, I don't want to travel anymore, I'm just gonna take Mabel's car and just go somewhere, right? So, to avoid all that, Alan, you want to talk about the travel?
I think just, you know, quickly, there are some efficiencies that I've talked to some of you all about that we're actually working on now in our finance office, and that includes, you know, going through an approved third-party vendor for, for airline reservations and things of that nature. We'll streamline the process and it, and it's, it's actually a process that's in place many other governments, both at the local and national level, utilize that type of service. The second piece of that is, is just having a point person that, I'll borrow a term from a, from a colleague in local government along, has been in the local government a long time. He was always naming somebody as a czar, and I don't know if that's good or bad, but I, I'm gonna steal his, his terminology and say we need a travel czar, someone that is on point for ensuring that your paperwork is appropriate and it's in place. And we have individuals who are doing that now. I just think that there's a way to improve upon that, so that it's a friendlier, easier process to navigate. And so I think that's, that's ultimately what, what we're after.
So, the, the idea is, all five of these things that we talked about, is to just clear it up and to make things easier for everyone. So, once again, this is the 98% solution. We're going to update the language on the electronic meeting, we said that up to two. The statement of economic interest we talked about, and that's probably gonna be like a virtual meeting with Colley and, and, and Mabel, probably January timeframe. Alan is still gonna work on the language for expanding the business meals and what that means for the business of the city, as well as with budget, I think we saw somewhere there, but, uh, like the, the sort of line items for the tables and different, just actual line items. And the last thing will be the third-party vendor. So, if that is, if we're all sort of in agreement with that, then I think the handbook is done and we will be ready to be voted on in December.
Yeah.
I think it was a great idea with this handbook, a lot of good information in here. So, we really appreciate the work you did, Alan.
Yes, thank you for that.
Yeah, I appreciate you. Give us kind of some guidelines, if I remember to say, just the overall responsibilities to do, just instead of saying, you're elected to city council, I'm March, cause that, so give us kind of some.
You're certainly welcome and thank, I want to thank my staff who really have helped mature the, the document and get it to where it is today. And we'll try to kind of keep the mayor's idea in the forefront, making revisions, getting it back to you. Hopefully, we can get it on your December meeting for adoption.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think with that, we'll go straight into comments, ideas, suggestion. I know we have some things to talk about in closed session, so, yep, so comments, ideas, suggestions, we can start with you.
Sure. Yes. So, I think, just wanted to highlight, we had, and hopefully I can speak for everyone who went to NLC, that it was a great experience, learned a lot, was able to collaborate with peers from across the country and address some similar issues, some issues that are unique to different localities. But overall, I think it was definitely a great experience and a great opportunity for us to continue to bond together as a team, I would say. But be on the lookout, I will send out an email from the different sessions that I went to. A lot of good information. I already talked to Allison about some things that I'll be able to share, but so, plethora of opportunity and knowledge there. So, just want to highlight and, and say thank you to NLC. And a huge shout out to our youth delegation that went. They did a phenomenal job representing us and I look forward to hearing their feedback at some point. Ginger, Alan, whenever we can make that happen, I definitely would love to hear from them. And with that, that is all that I have.
Councilman Long?
I won't go through that, same thing. I, I did enjoy the, I did enjoy the NLC. I will say, there was two things I heard over and over again, is AI and housing. And, and like Vice Mayor Bethany said, I'll send out a report. Well, I think when I saw the statement about our staffing levels, one of the areas they stated is, we should not be afraid of AI, but use AI to fill those hard to fill jobs that we have in the city. And then also, use AI to make sure our strategic priorities are aligned with our codes. So, I think that was really good information. But as Vice Mayor Bethany said, I'll, I'll be sending out a report, short, forthcoming. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Neely?
No comments.
Councilman Vic?
Yeah, I, I just want to quickly add along with NLC as well, one of the big ticket items was mental health. One of the, as far as the workshops, mental health with youth and young adults, and as well as the one that I enjoyed the most was the data for, data for elected officials and how even though we might, in a city like this, look at the South District, the Central and the North, but even within those same areas, being able to use, they actually have a, a program that you can quantify data as, as it relates to people's incomes, the housing, single-family housing. So, they really have some, a good, a real workshop, so it was really nice.
Thank you. Councilman Harris?
No.
Colley?
No. I too enjoyed the NLC conference. I, I tried to blend in with all the other elected officials. Hopefully, they, they didn't, where'd that administrator come from? It was, it was very, it was very good to go to the mini sessions that were available and kept all of us busy, I know that, as most conferences do. I tried to focus on the public safety tracks and I probably sent Chief Drew, I don't know, dozens of emails from some that I attended, but I'm particularly interested in building what was generally coined as public, as integrated public safety solutions to understand the root cause of, of violence. And so there are a number of cities who gave examples. And so there are a number of cities who gave examples about how they're taking data from across the organization to really understand the root cause of crime in order to build widespread community support and diminish all the demands that many of our police officers have every time they respond to a call for service. So I took back some great ideas from a number of those sessions and look forward to having more conversations with staff and council about them.
Thank you, and I'll wrap up. I actually have just two or three things, if you permit me. I know I've been talking a lot, but I think it's important. So number one, December 4th, so we talked about last time with Allison and with Bo and with Alan, with the Bloomberg program, December 4th is going to be the date that Bloomberg sends their consulting team down here, that's a Monday. We have picked internally about 15 community members. We tried to hit every part of the city, faith leaders, developers, school, I mean, like every single little metric has been hit. If council wants to like also come participate, that's going to be great. Ideally, we're going to take that team of 15 and try to mold a team of eight that's going to go to New York City and represent the city. A lot of stakeholders, I think, as you talk about the main effort, the center of gravity being down on Newport News, I think it's going to be a really important day for our city, and I just want to thank Bo and Allison for all the hard work. I know it's been a lot of emails that you've been sending, and I really do appreciate it. We talked about the code of ethics. Once again, thank you, Alan and staff, for, I know we had a tight timeline for that, and multiple revisions, Cleeter and the whole comm staff, thank you for those fast revisions. And the last thing I'll talk about is, I would have loved to come to NLC. John, I tried to make it, but I had to go to DC for a day and a half because I really wanted to lock down the funding for Jefferson Lab. So I sent out a pretty comprehensive report, but there are a few things that I just want to hit on quickly. We weren't able to schedule time with the Secretary of Energy, Secretary Granholm, we talked to the number three or four person in the DOE. Big takeaway for, I know everyone's talking about Jefferson Lab as like a $300 to $500 million investment. Well, really, it's more of $30 million upfront, and then it's sort of year by year. So the question that I had, and Jerry will be in the back, I think I saw Jerry, Jerry can help as well, but the question that I had is, how can we make sure that we maximize the full half a billion dollars? And the main ingredient is community involvement. They want to come down and visit Newport News, they want to have the band, they want to see how STEM is connected to Jefferson Lab. I think it was important that we talked about Brooks Crossing, that's going to be a part of it. It's really connecting the entire ecosystem. So they're interested, they're really excited, and I want to make sure that we get that full amount of money and not just a small amount for Jefferson Lab. The second part is, we met with Senator Kane really about the NDAA funding, which is the National Defense Authorization Act. I think when we talked to the military base commanders, they voiced a lot of concern about the childcare, and so he did it for Norfolk and for Virginia Beach. We asked him to include, next time in the federal budget, more funding for military childcare for Newport News. Senator Kane said he would be glad to carry that, and so we're going to follow up with that in a few weeks. Additionally, we talked about the Defense Community Infrastructure Pilot Program. We talked about resiliency in housing, I think he's a committee chair or a vice committee chair, so he'll be able to put that for federal legislation. That's going to be a big priority for us next year.
Yeah, so when will our resilience consulting team come back with some findings? Because I mean, I think some of that information that we received from them should, we should look at that for that Defense Community Infrastructure Pilot Program funded.
No, 100%. You want to talk on that, Alan?
I'm going to allow, Owen to talk on that.
Yeah, I know Owen loves resiliency and sustainability.
So I think to the point, I think the references to the Bloomberg, make sure I get the acronym correct, Bloomberg American Sustainability Cities Program. We actually just submitted the proposal right before Thanksgiving. We're hoping to hear if we're invited to participate in that cohort after the turn of the year, and from that, potentially, we could pursue. One of the tracks that we suggested we'd like to look at is kind of that environmental piece, I think that could fall in that.
I'm referring to the town hall, resilient town halls. We had, previous this year, we had a team, consultant team that come in that was dealing with flooding, stormwater resilience, that's what I was referring to.
Gotcha. Yeah, we may need some additional input from engineering and others involved in that one, yeah.
And I think ideally, we're just trying to, you know, we made the decision as a council early on to bring on federal lobbyists, and so we want to make sure, you know, I think about the return on investment, we spent some money, and now we need to get that back in grants, and I think this is the opportunity. We have, I think it's the junior senator who will carry it for us, who's also on the committee, I think it's important that we just make sure that we apply for those and get those in at the correct time. The last thing I wanted to mention was, and this is a Jerry Wilson thing, so I'll look over there, but I do know, I think this is going to be the last time in a while that there's a surplus in the state budget. I know we're about a billion dollars, I believe, in surplus-ish, plus or minus? Okay?
Minus.
Okay, minus. I would like to look at the capital projects for Jefferson Lab. I think Newport News should get some of that giant surplus, which I don't think, you know, it's going to be a little bit that we have a surplus, but I think we're going to go all in on J-Lab, I think we need to get some of that money for capital projects. If we could talk to our delegation, that would be really helpful. And the last thing that I'm going to say is, I sent it out to key staff, I want to make sure council's aware. The president and the EPA announced $2 billion last week for environmental justice. I think we're going to be the perfect candidate for that. When you think about climate resiliency, you think about the coal in the Southeast, there's a lot, I mean, $2 billion is, I think, I think there's some earmarks that aside for Newport News. So Jerry flagged it with our federal lobbyist, we'll go back and talk to EPA, I'll be back mid-January, but wanted to flag $2 billion, it came out last week, and I think it's a rolling process. So I know Alan and key staff are aware, but rolling process, we'd love to get our application submitted, especially for Councilman Vick and Councilman Ely. I think that $2 billion will help us with the coal in the Southeast.
So when will the air quality study come back? Because I know that was part of the, they placed monitors throughout the city to determine the quality of air. When will we hear back from that?
Somebody sent an email about that, it was in our email.
Right now, we don't know exactly when it's taking place, but they don't have...
Sorry, could we use the mic, just for people who are listening? Can someone pass him a mic?
Right.
Thank you. I can hear you, but just for the audience.
Currently, they, this is going to be through DEQ, and DEQ has not secured the, where the sites are, so they've got to go through that process yet, so the process, and actually the air quality monitoring, is not up and running at this point. So there's a little time coming for that, yeah.
But it's definitely, yeah, it's definitely top of mind, Councilman Long, and I think with this $2 billion from the EPA, and once we establish connections up there, I believe that's how we mitigate the coal for the Southeast. That is all I have, I know that was a lot. Are there any questions before we take us into closed session? Okay, hearing none. Councilman Long?
I have a substitute motion.
Okay, do we have that?
I make a motion that pursuant to Section 2.2, DAS 3, 711A of the Code of Virginia, 1950, is amended subject to one of seven that the council hold a close minute for the purpose of, one, discussion consideration of interview of prospective candidates for employment assignment, employment promotion, performance, demotion, salary disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, the subject of which are discussions or consideration of prospective candidates for the city manager, and seven, a consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual and probable litigation, where such consultation open meetings would adversely affect the negotiating process of the public body, the subject of which is presented case involving a tort claim.
Second?
We move to second? Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you, everyone.[1171.83]
[1406.32]
I move that members of council survey that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in motion but which a closed meeting was convened was heard, discussed, and considered in the closed meeting by the council.
Second.
Moved it second, and please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Motion carried six zero.
Thank you, stand adjourned.